Find that due to the state of emergency declared by the governor is the result of the COVID-19 pandemic. And in accordance with the governor's emergency order number 12 pursuant to executive order 2020-04, this public body is authorized to meet electronically. Please note, there is no physical location to observe and listen contemporaneously to this meeting, which was authorized pursuant to the governor's emergency order. However, in accordance with the emergency order, I am confirming the following, that we are: A. Providing public access to the meeting by telephone with additional access possibilities by video or other electronic means. We are utilizing Zoom for this electronic meeting. All members of the committee and select legislative staff have the ability to communicate contemporaneously during this meeting through this platform. And the public has access to contemporaneously listen and if necessary, participate in this meeting by clicking on the following website address: or dialing one of the following phone numbers: B. Providing public notice of the necessary information for accessing the meeting. We previously gave notice to the public of the necessary information for accessing the meeting, including how to access the meeting using Zoom or telephonically. This information is printed in your House calendar. C. Providing a mechanism for the public to alert the public body during the meeting if there are problems with access. If anyone has a problem, please call 603-271-3600 or email H as in House, C as in Committee, S as in Services, D. Adjourned the meeting if the public is unable to access the meeting. In the event the public is unable to access the meeting, the meeting will be adjourned and rescheduled. I want to introduce the staff that are on the meeting assisting us. Jen For, House Committee Researcher, is the meeting host. Additional House Committee Services staff providing support are Brad Greenland, Pam Smiling, and Christina Dyer. This is a work session on HB 1563-FN and HB 1627-FN. We will take them in that order. The Ways and Means Committee held a public hearing on HB 1563-FN March 4th and a public hearing on HB 1627-FN March 5th. The purpose of a work session is for the committee itself to discuss the bill and register opinions before we move to a vote at another time. The chair retains the ability to call on certain individuals who have indicated that they have new information since the public hearing and not to call on other attendees who may also wish to speak. Because the main purpose of this meeting is for the members to discuss among themselves. Copies of the bills and other relevant materials have been posted on the main page of the General Court website under the heading "Remote Meetings." Please note that if any votes are taken during this meeting, they shall be done by roll call vote. However, there should be no dispositive votes in a work session. Let us start the meeting by taking roll call attendance. When each member states their presence, please also state whether there is anyone in the room with you during this meeting, which is required under the right to know law. Thank you. I believe the clerk should call the roll.
Okay, second.
How's everything going? Meet going, all that stuff?
Representative Malloy, would you call a roll?
Yes, I'll call a roll. Representative Almi.
Present at home in Lebanon alone.
Representative Ames.
President, in Jeffrey.
Home in Warner, and my dog is with me.
Representative Southworth.
At home in Dover alone.
Clerk, Representative Malloy is at home and no one else is in the room here.
Oh yeah, fucking 30 miles away. Yeah, I'm well away.
Representative Shamber.
Could I just interrupt for a minute? Representative Doucette, is it you that's talking occasionally?
I muted him. I don't think he realized that he was unmuted for roll.
Okay, thank you. Representative Malloy may continue.
Representative Shamber.
He's muted.
Representative Shamber. I see a box.
There we go.
Representative Shamber here in Wilmette and alone.
Representative Tucker.
Here alone in Randolph, New Hampshire.
Representative Bunker.
I am present. I'm in Exeter and I'm in a private room.
Representative Gamarlo.
I'm here in Swansea, all by myself.
Representative Griffith.
Present and alone.
I'll say it again, Representative Lockman. Representative Stringham.
I'm here in Laken by myself.
Representative Major.
Here in Plastow by myself.
Representative Griffin.
I'm here in Windham by myself.
Representative Ullery.
I'm here, Hudson. My wife's in the house.
Representative Ullery, you're very hard to hear. If you could do something about your your volume, that would help. You don't have to reply. Representative Malloy.
My mic was muted. I'm here, Stringham alone. Thank you.
Representative Burns.
Lang.
I'll repeat.
It's been replaced by Representative Lang.
I see a box here that...
Yes. Representative Doucette, we can't hear you. I think he said something.
Representative Doucette. I'm not hearing an acknowledgement.
Representative Doucette, do you have headphones on?
So that's a "here"?
It sounds like he's talking to someone else.
Oh, oh dear.
I have not heard a "here" and I'm by... who's with me, so I want to be completely accurate about this. For now, I'll mark "not here." We'll move on. Representative Edwards.
He won't be here.
Okay. Representative Burstein.
Good morning. I'm here in beautiful Nottingham, New Hampshire, all by myself.
There are 16 present and four not present.
About 10 more.
Sorry, did I not call? Oh, Representative... But that's the committee. Is somebody sitting in for someone?
Lang is a replacement for Burns.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, so Representative Lang.
You're muted, Representative Lang. Unmute.
Thank you. I couldn't unmute myself. Representative Lang, I'm in my home office in Sanburton, New Hampshire, and I am alone.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So that takes us to 17 present, three absent. I still see Representative Doucette's name on the screen, but I have not heard an acknowledgement.
He seems to... Representative Doucette, would you respond? Representative Doucette, you have to turn off the radio or whatever it is and talk to us.
Okay, I'm gonna unmute.
Well, that's the status I have, so Representative Almi, how you'd like to proceed.
I see that Representative Griffith and Representative Burstein would like to be recognized. We're just gonna wait for Representative Almi to come back.
Representative Burstein and then whom?
And Representative Griffith also.
And, okay. We'll start with Representative Burstein. Thank you.
Fred just texted me. Representative Doucette just texted me saying he's having computer problems right now.
But he managed to introduce himself, I hope, while I was off stopping the phone, which unfortunately is completely unstoppable.
I'm sorry to interrupt Representative Almi, but Representative Burstein, if you have an audience with Representative Doucette and he's able to resolve his issues, if he could maybe raise his hand when he gets back. I just don't want to leave him unmuted while he's sorting that out.
Would there be computer issues that Brad Greenland can help with?
I've no idea. I'll tell him to reach out to Brad if he can't solve it.
Yeah, and if he wants us to reach out to him, just...
Oh, he just texted me saying, "Just tell them to unmute me. I think I have the audio fixed."
Okay. Okay.
Hello, is that working?
Yes.
My apologies. It's all on my end with my internet connection. Please forgive me.
We all have problems like that. So are you present and alone?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Attendance is now 18 yes, two not answering or not in attendance.
Thank you. So we are going to take up amendment on House Bill 1563 first. On... I wanted to make a short statement before we start, which is that I seem to have been derelict at the beginning of this term in getting people to understand that our committee, under the rules, has a responsibility to on make sure that dedicated funds that are being changed or dedicated funds that are new on are working appropriately, are sourced appropriately, on are raising the right kind of money for the job and vice versa. And this is why we spend a fair amount of time on some things that you may think are the policy of prior committee. This, both of these bills actually fall into this category. So Representative Burstein has a question or a comment or both. And I want him to talk. Could you unmute there?
No, I'm muted now. Madam Chair, this is a second committee bill. And I would just like you to refresh our memory on what that means to be a second committee bill. And does that mean there are any boundaries on this discussion? Or is the breadth of the discussion limited to the dedicated fund? Or we will... or will we be revisiting policy aspects of this bill that were discussed by the prior committee judiciary on their February 5th exec session?
Well, if we are going to discuss the amendment, which I thought was most of the reason for this work session, the work session is changing the policy of the first committee. So I think to that extent, we are going to have, in the sense that, in our sense of a dedicated fund, which has to be be tailored to the objective of the fund, the objective has to be clear and the, both the sourcing and the amount of money has to be appropriate to that fund. And in removing this from governor and counsel, which in the public hearing this committee discussed was not appropriate within the administrative structure of the state and putting it under Health and Human Services and adjusting the subsection before the one that was dealt with in the first committee to mirror the section that was dealt with in that. We have have a new amendment which does deal with the policy of the first committee and change it somewhat from what it had been before, particularly in the aspects of what a dedicated fund does and how it operates. So it is a little difficult to figure out the boundaries on this one. And an appropriate response could be simply to take the bill and either interim study or ITL it so that it can go back to the sponsor and be submitted as a clean bill to whichever committee is considered appropriate next term because we may have different people deciding which bills go where.
Okay, so it sounds to me like you're gonna allow a lot of latitude and while you don't know the exact boundaries right now, it sounds like everything's in play. Is that correct?
I think one of the objectives of the bill was to remove the control from the AG's office to anywhere else. And that was fairly clear in the original, in the public hearing. I would hope that we would not have a lot of discussion of what we learned in the public hearing, particularly if five people are going to do the same discussion. We do have the additional problem that the people who would have been opposed to the bill did not notice the bill going through the first committee and are ready to appear right now, which is a trifle late. But this whole procedure is a trifle late because not just of COVID, but of the the lack of complete presentation, either in our public hearing or in the public hearing apparently of the first committee. I understand it was only represented by the AG's person who is here in the audience, I believe.
So you're gonna allow testimony even though this is a work session because the certain parties were unaware of the first time the bill was heard? And you extend that courtesy to all parties?
Oh, yes. The trouble is, we... you have a great number of people in the audience that would wish to talk. I hope that they will, if they hear someone else saying something, that they will not feel that they have to repeat it. And I hope the same would be true of the four peoples that... three or four people that seem to be on the other side. I'm not sure where they all are.
Right. I have no idea if they want to speak or not. They're just here to make themselves available to the committee, should they be needed. As far as I know, but perhaps some of them want to speak.
Yeah. But it is a little difficult in this format because unless someone inside the committee knows what they'd have to offer, we can't find out until they've talked.
It's gonna be difficult, but I'm confident you will shepherd us to the promised land.
I will try. Thank you. I think the amendment came from Representative Burstein and Representative Spilling. Representative Burstein is the one on the committee. So I think he ought to explain the amendment. I hope everybody has read it. Half the committee didn't get it till recently.
Thank you, Madam Chair. As we all know, this is a second committee bill. The bill was originally in Judiciary Committee, and then it came to the floor of the House on February 19th and passed 329 to 21. The motion was ought to pass. So it seems from that first vote that there's a tremendous appetite from the House for the spirit of this bill. And when Ways and Means began its work on the bill, my notes show that the chair had some significant problems with the bill regarding the technical application of the bill, not the spirit of the bill, but the implementation of it. So this amendment tried to address all of that, and I believe it did. Just as concise as I can be, this money redirects funds from the Drug Forfeiture Fund to go towards treatment instead of enforcement. The sponsor of the bill and I were very careful to be as fair as we can. And depending on the situation, it's possible law enforcement could actually receive bigger reimbursements than they were receiving before. But once they're reimbursed for everything, all out-of-pocket expenses related to the prosecution, after that, the money would go towards drug treatment to be administered by the Department of HHS. That's how the amendment reads.
Thank you. We did not, in our public hearing, discuss the removal from the purposes of the dedicated fund of a number of the mechanisms for drug enforcement that are in the bill. And we did not do it because there was nobody present who could talk to us about that, the gentleman from the Department of Justice who did not have at that time chiefs that I think we got afterwards about where exactly the money was being spent at different times and how much money, which is under $500,000 a year, was going into it. And Mr. Locke, the attorney Locke from the AG's office, did provide this. I believe it was after the public hearing. It's been quite a while now. So perhaps we should start by having him talk about where the money has been going and how much of it... We know that 10% of it went to Health and Human Services, but we don't know where the rest of it was going, except through this.
Representative Almi, I'm sorry to interrupt. I just wanted to let you know that Representative Abramey has had his hand up. I don't know if you'd like to recognize him first or the attorney?
I think we should recognize Representative Abramey first because he's been talking with with the Attorney General's office, I believe. Representative Abramey?
Okay, yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. You're absolutely correct that the bill that came to us was flawed. Not necessarily in a Ways and Means kind of way, but it was going to direct the funds to the governor. And we heard from Attorney Formella, the governor's prime attorney, that they don't have the discretion to spend that money. It has to go to an agency. So then, and that was in our last meeting, then we received this amendment. And when I look at the amendment, and I do want others to look at this, when you go to the bottom, to number two in the amendment, it modifies Roman 1. And that's where it gives the authority for the dispense, for the fund to the DHHS and takes it away from the Attorney General. The only problem is that when you look at the current statute, when you look at Roman 2 and 3, it still says that the AG's office is responsible for reporting back to the governor and executive counsel and that the Attorney General's office shall adopt rules. So the amendment as is is flawed, from my perspective. So I would, like others, as this goes on, to address that. I think the amendment needs work if we're to adopt this. And we could talk about policy later on, but those are just some observations I made. And anybody else wants to react to that or saw the same thing that I saw, should raise your hand, I guess. But anyway, those are my comments for now. Thank you.
Just to clarify, we're talking about RSA 318B, 17B, which I had sent to the entire committee. And sections Roman 1 and 2 deal with the Attorney General.
Yeah, the amendment of...
And reports.
That's the top part. The bottom, the second change was to amend RSA 318B, colon, 17-C, Roman 1. And when you read that, it gives the gives the DHHS responsibility for that fund, takes it away from the Attorney General, which, okay, but it's silent when it comes to Roman 2 and 3 in the current statute, where the AG is still responsible for reporting
And the whole forfeiture process.
Right. So I, you know, the options we have is just to do what you earlier said, is to either ITL this bill or study it. Or at the very least, this amendment's gonna have to be fixed again. And we'll get to that, I guess, at the end of our discussion here, whether it's worth trying to fix this amendment or not.
Representative Almi, Representative Ames would like to be recognized.
Representative Ames.
Yeah, thank you. I just, I want to second what Representative Abramey has just pointed out, that there's still technical problems with the bill as it would be amended by the proposed amendment that he has pointed out. There's certainly an issue there. And I also find myself puzzling over the fact that the proposed amendment has two agencies taking money out of the Drug Forfeiture Fund with, I think, an unclear line between the two. If you look at the new paragraph that's being introduced at 17B, Rowan 5, the, from the funds available in the Drug Forfeiture Fund, the Department of Justice shall pay. And the first sub-paragraph is basically the expenses of the proceeding that generates the fund. So that's... So that's, in effect, that's saying that the net after expenses will be in the drug, will still be in the Drug Forfeiture Fund. That makes sense. But the second item is, I think, open-ended. It's reimburse all direct costs incurred in the arrest and prosecution of a person, that would be any person, for a criminal violation of this chapter on a case-by-case basis. So there's an ongoing potential expense for drawdown by the Department of Justice. And while that activity is going on in the Department of Justice side, on the other side, with now the Department of Health and Human Services enabled to draw out of this fund, any balance remaining in the Drug Forfeiture Fund is administered by the Department of Health and Human Services. Well, what is that balance? It's a dynamic situation. And with one agency and the other agency both involved, it seems to me it's a recipe for trouble. Those are my comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Representative Southworth has his hand up.
Thank you. I want to echo the other concerns. And in terms of the discussion of the hearing, it seems like we're really shifting not from the merits of the bill or, you know, the good intentions and so on, things that were voted before. We really need to decide, is it ready for prime time? Is it something that can really be ready for a June vote? And I almost think we don't have all the information we need to decide that, except that the more we talk, the more complicated it gets to improve the amendment.
Thank you. I'd like to point out also that the fund is supposed to be administered in Health and Human Services, but only the balance remaining in the fund after DOJ has done the expenditures allowed in the new Section 1 are supposed to go to Health and Human Services. I don't, I think, does the does the committee want to hear from the woman from Health and Human Services that is present in the audience that has been following this bill, apparently?
Maybe a raise of hands or thumbs up or thumbs down?
Yes, thumbs up or thumbs down. I don't think we've got thumbs here, but raising your hand. We have, we have at least, we have two people requesting that, three.
We've got a bunch of hands.
Four, there are more of them. Okay, so I mentioned, I think, that I didn't beforehand, that I didn't manage to get my list printed out of the people who were in the audience. Jen, do you have the woman from AG, oh Higgins, her name, Representative Higgins?
We had her in the list. Ms. O'Higgins, if you could raise your hand, you'll pop up to the top of the list for us. It's just a long list.
It is a very long list.
We saw her earlier.
I think this is the first time any of us are having to deal with this kind of complication in. I don't see her now unless she's one of the phone numbers.
I think we saw her earlier and she's not there now.
Okay. So.
Representative Lang has his hand physically up.
Yes, yes. Representative Lang, if you could, and Representative Abramey has his hand up, he would know probably what's going on. We'll ask her first. And Representative Lang, if you can use the raise hand function in the panelists, participants, your
I would have loved to do that, except it's not working for me. I can't raise my hand. That's why I was doing this.
Okay. Raise your hand is at the very bottom of the panelist list unless you are on a Mac, in which case it is under Other down there somehow.
It should be at the bottom. If you click Participants?
I found it.
Okay, great.
So I think we will, we will ask Representative Abramey first. Why?
Jennifer O'Higgins has reappeared.
Oh, good.
Raised her hand. Would you like to hear from her now?
Yes, please.
Okay, Ms. O'Higgins, you're on.
Hi there, this is Jennifer O'Higgins. I'm the Senior Policy Analyst for Behavioral Health, the Legislative Liaison. I was, had called in since I don't have great internet connections. So then, when you called on me, I had to re-log into Zoom. So I'm sorry about that confusion. So we received the amendment yesterday. So we haven't really had time to do a full fiscal review at this point. But I think that we have a little bit of confusion between, you know, Section 1 and Section 2 of the bill, where with the Department of Justice currently administering the fund and the second piece of the bill having, you know, the fund be administered by DHHS. I think there's currently that 10% set aside for DHHS. And I don't know that we have the expertise in the department to be able to reimburse for costs incurred by arrests and prosecutions. I think that that expertise does live with the DOJ. So I would, you know, send it off to them for that question. As far as administering any funding around prevention, treatment, and recovery, that is where, you know, our expertise would come into play. And if you have any questions for me, I'm happy to try to field them as best I can.
Thank you. Is there anyone who has questions of Ms. O'Higgins?
Representative Lang has raised his hand.
Representative Lang?
Thank you. So as I'm reading this, the way I'm reading it is that after a forfeiture, first, the Department of Justice pays its expenses under 1 and 2 of subsection 5. They're responsible, the Department of Justice is responsible for allocating those funds. And then, anything that's left over at the end of the fiscal year, except for 10%, so 90% of whatever balance is left over, is then shifted to Health and Human Services for treatment. Is that how I'm reading this amendment right?
I don't believe Ms. O'Higgins can answer that since they seem to have just seen the amendment yesterday. But the balance, yes, the balance seems to shift over that, at that point. But all of this money is going into the Drug Forfeiture Fund and is going in from work by the DOJ before that shift of the 10% happens. Yet in Section 2, it says that the fund is going to, in the Treasury, is going to be administered entirely by the Department of Health and Human Services. So presumably, the DOJ would have to report back for what seems to be the majority of the money to the Department of Health and Human Services in order to get permission to spend it. And that seems a little unworkable to me at any rate.
Representative Ames is eager to contribute.
Well, Representative Abramey, did you put your hand back down? You say, okay, I think you're muted. So Representative Ames has his hand up and apparently had it up earlier.
No, I just wanted to respond to Representative Lang's points. And just, I think if you look closely at the new language, sub-paragraphs 1 and 2, that the takeout from the fund is broader than what you think it might be or what you suggested it might be on First blush. The, there are two paragraphs. It's, one is very clear. It's the reasonable cost of the forfeiture proceeding. Two is broader than the forfeiture proceeding. It's all direct costs in the arrest and prosecution of a person on a case-by-case basis. So it's anticipating many cases, case-by-case reimbursement of costs. It's ongoing. It's beyond the forfeiture proceeding. If it's set in there, reimburse all direct costs incurred in the arrest and prosecution of a person involved in the matter referenced in sub-paragraph 1. It would be contained by that particular case where the money, that was generating the money that's going to the Drug Forfeiture Fund. But it's not. It's much broader. That's my point. And that's a problem.
Thank you. Representative Burstein has his hand up.
Yeah, thank you. It's currently, we're reimbursing for this. It isn't, and that's what we're doing right now, Representative Ames. But wouldn't the dynamic aspect of ongoing, I mean, the money is not dispersed until after everything is finished. That's how it's currently working. This doesn't change that. So while your point about it being ongoing costs and the dynastism regarding that, that's going on right now. And they get, and there's reimbursements made to law enforcement for all out-of-pocket expenses. This doesn't change.
Respond?
Yes.
Yeah. The problem in my trying to respond to that gets to, I think, the problem that we're encountering. We don't have anybody, maybe this proceeding isn't well set up to give us the full picture of how this fund operates, has operated, is intended to operate in the future. We're digging into a policy and an activity area that we're not expert in. And I don't know exactly how it's operated in the past. My sense is that it, that these phrases, they weren't in sub-paragraphs before, have enabled the Department of Justice to reimburse for proceedings that reach beyond particular proceedings that actually generate the funds. But I don't know that for a fact. So one of the difficulties that I have and why I lean towards towards sending this bill back for reworking so that it can be properly reviewed by a first committee is that we're operating on thin ice. We don't really understand the full dimensions of this thing, and we can't.
Thank you, Representative Ames. Representative Abramey is next, and then Representative Stringham.
To Representative Ames's point, perhaps Sean Locke could add some some information as to how the fund actually works today. I'd also like to make sure we hear from the Chief Brefonsky from Bedford, who represents the police chiefs, who, they've been studying this for a couple of weeks now. So I think they have some things they want to say as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Do I understand they received the amendment several weeks ago?
Several ago. I provided it to them.
Thank you. And because we're in the focus, as our side didn't see it. Thank you.
Whenever, whenever, let me put it this way. Whenever you sent it out, it got forwarded.
I didn't send it out until extremely recently because I didn't receive it until extremely recently. Perhaps, I cannot remember his name, the the police chief.
Brefonsky?
Brefonsky, thank you. Is he willing to speak for a minute? Is he on this list?
Yeah, just a minute.
I wish these lists were alphabetical.
It's alphabetical by first name, which makes it a little challenging. He's raised his hand for us. Thank you.
Thank you. So we would like to
He's, he's on now.
Representative Breszanski, I think.
Yes, good morning. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great. Madam Chair and members of the committee for giving the Chiefs of Police a few moments to discuss this. And I'll go directly to the core of your discussion, which I think I may be able to help you with. And if I may, in my own armed background vernacular, this is a chicken and the egg sort of discussion here with respect to the source of these funds. The way that this bill is amended and likely to be administered by DHHS, a non-law enforcement agency, will eventually result in the fund going to zero over time. And the reason why this assumption is being made by the chiefs is that the funds in the Drug Asset Forfeiture Fund go directly to support the investigations that result in the seizures from drug traffickers that replenish the fund. And over time, when you tighten off funds for a non-law enforcement investigative purpose, eventually, there will be less funds available to conduct investigations. And therefore, the source of the funds will eventually dry up. So as amended, we believe that over time, that this administration, re-administration of what was originally intended to support drug trafficking investigations and shift the burden from the taxpayer to the drug trafficker will eventually result in the shifting back to the taxpayer. And that's why we are opposed to it, simply because it will eventually result in the dilution and the elimination of the funds available to conduct investigations. And therefore, no investigations, no more funds.
Thank you. Representative Stringham has his hand up still.
We had heard some testimony about how the existing funds are managed, I guess, at the AG's office. And most of what I saw was, you know, wasn't very sophisticated accounting. So there was a significant portion of money that was kind of building up because it was being held, probably, I believe, you know, because it couldn't be released since, you know, final dispensation of the case might not have been heard yet. So there was kind of more funds there than were active. And at such time, they felt that the disposition of a case was final. That's when the funds were being apportioned back to police for those who brought in the funds, presumably for additional investigative purposes or the other uses that were in there. So I just thought I would bring that, bring that back in in follow-up to Representative Ames and Representative Burstein's comments.
Thank you, Representative Stringham. Would that imply that you would think that a performance audit would be in order for this program? Representative Stringham?
Yeah, I would think so.
So are there, Representative Burstein, did you have your hand up again or had Bernstein, did you have your hand up again or had it not gone down?
It's up. Thank you. I, I, I think, um, I want to just sort of follow on to what Representative Stringham was saying. And I believe that one of the motivations for the original bill was the lack of transparency. As a matter of fact, the Institute of Justice gives New Hampshire a D minus ranking for forfeiture transparency and accountability. And I believe Representative Spillane, the prime sponsor of this bill, would like to speak more to, to that. So I, I request that he be permitted to speak.
Okay. Could we bring Representative Spillane out of the audience? Well, I'm blanking on his first name so that we can find it unless he'll raise his hand.
He's ready to go.
Okay, good.
Thank you, Madam Chair and members of the committee. Um, am I able to be heard right?
Yes.
Okay. I want to thank you all for giving me the opportunity to speak. We have worked hard on this bill and, um, I think as you could see with the previous vote on the House floor, that it is something that, um, the goal is, is achievable and something that a great many of the representatives want to see happen. Uh, part of that is transparency because as we've seen, there is, uh, zero accountability for any amount of the monies except for the 10% that goes to DHHS right now. Um, the rest of the money goes into a black hole, um, where we are told that, uh, you know, just trust us, it's being used for further arrests. I want to also point out that the, um, the insinuation that arrests and prosecution of drug trafficking will cease if they don't have this money is fallacious. And the, the mere insinuation that we would stop arresting people is really, a ridiculous one in my opinion. There is not going to be a halt to law enforcement's prosecution and arrest of drug traffickers in the state. It, it will not happen. We will continue to arrest. But we have a terrible problem with our opioid crisis. We've lost 68 more people to the opioid crisis so far this year. That's just this year in 2020. And we're going to continue seeing these numbers, especially with this opioid, uh, crisis converging with the, the COVID shutdown. We saw it during the COVID shutdown that treatment programs were being stopped, that people were not, uh, they, people who were working and, and trying to become sober, lost their jobs, which pushed them back into, um, isolation and desperation and turned them back to drugs. This money can go very far in making sure that we can continue providing services. And it makes the person who victimized these people pay for their recovery. It is taking the ill-gotten gains from the drug trafficking and using it to restore people and to give them hope and to change their lives. So I would hope that if there are any minor details that we need to iron out, continue, uh, still going on with this, this amendment. I mean, we tried our best to, uh, address every issue that was brought up in the last public hearing that, uh, that you guys found. Um, but we are willing to continue working on this and clean it up in any way that you think is necessary to make sure that it, it passes muster because the goal is achievable and it's an, it's a worthwhile goal to be able to provide this money to those who need help recovering from the, the, uh, drug traffickers.
Okay, thank you. Uh, I would like to go to both, uh, Mr. Locke, Attorney Locke, uh, and to, uh, Ms. O'Higgins again to ask how much money they think we are talking about relative to the amount of money that is going to that goal already, uh, elsewhere. Uh, but do Representative, Representative Lori just removed his hand? Representative Abrahmi, do you want to say something first? Oh, you just put it back.
I know, I'm here. I have a, a question for Representative Spillane, uh, if you don't mind. So if more money is going to treatment, then where is the money coming from to the enforcement? It sounds like the only other place, if it's a zero-sum game, place that it comes from the taxpayers, uh, whether it be property taxpayers or state tech, you know, taxpayers to fund the enforcement part. And, uh, that's where I'm, that's where I get confused. Because you're saying you're doing this because you want more money to go into drug treatment. Uh, but that's fine. But what about, where does the money come from? Eventually, we're going to be paying the taxpayers, it sounds like, are going to be paying for, for something here. Is that correct?
We, we already pay for drug enforcement. This small amount, when it comes to the overall size of the police budget, is almost nothing to them. We are not, um, going to stop the law enforcement just because this money is redirected. This, this is a twofold bill. It increases the transparency because it now gives a dedic-, that gives a dedicated fund to that money that is drug forfeiture money from the criminals and puts it under the spending for those programs where it's accountable and we can see where it's going, which will increase the transparency of this entire drug forfeiture process. And on top of it, the law enforcement budget is, is not even going to decrease by a hundredth of a percent because of this. It's ridiculous to think that, that this small amount is making a dent at all in what we've already paid funding for law enforcement. Law enforcement activities are going to continue to go on. We have federal grant money that we use continually for drug enforcement. The, the federal authorities are involved in it. And when they get involved with the drug forfeiture, they get their bite of our money as well before they take, before we get to take our portion. So, um, this is not a situation that's going to shift taxpayer money suddenly to increase the police budget. The police already have their budget and they're already using that money to arrest people and convict them. And that's not going to stop. But these facilities need it. We just lost last year our only youth residential facility in New Hampshire for treatment. It shut down. And we don't have another one right now. And Mrs. Johnston, who lost her son last Thanksgiving, is, is on the phone listening as well. And she had to send her son to California for residential treatment. Do we want to be the state that has to export our children with drug abuse? Problems so that they can have treatment? Or do we want to be able to take care of our children? And make them whole again?
Thank you, Representative Spillane. I have three representatives' hands up, but I want to interrupt this and introduce some facts to this. I would like to listen to, uh, Ms. O'Higgins talk about how much money, I hope she has this, uh, not, it doesn't have to be precise, how much money is being spent on the opioid crisis right now by the state. And then on, on Attorney Locke, talk about how much money would be left after, uh, the reasonable expenses of forfeiture proceedings and reimbursement of all direct costs in arrest and protection. Uh, so, um, could we call again on Ms. O'Higgins? Would she be willing to come up? Uh, Jenny O?
Yes.
She's labeled as.
Hi there. I would have to get back to you on which portions are state funds versus our grants and pieces like that. So I wouldn't be able to provide you with a, a figure of spending.
Yes. Uh, Ms. O'Higgins, I don't care what part of it is grants and what part of it is, is state money. The question is how much is the state spending right now?
I, I'm not sure. I'd have to get back to you.
Oh, okay. You don't have any idea whether it's millions, tens of millions or $250,000? Oh dear.
I'm sorry. I was then muted and unmuted back and forth.
Yeah.
Um, we, I mean, we, we have several large grants, including a block, a block grant as well as the state opioid response grant currently that, you know, is 50, it's a odd million dollars. So no, it's not 250,000, but, um, you know, again, we, I, I would have to just like break out those investments based on what you're, what information you're looking for.
Thank you. But it's, it's in the tens of millions.
Correct.
Thank you.
That's prevention, treatment and recovery as well.
Yes, okay. Uh, Attorney Locke? Could, could you get on and talk to us about roughly how much money is left over after you pay for the items that are in section? One, the reasonable expenses of forfeiture proceedings. And, uh, two, the reimbursement of all direct costs in arrest and prosecution on, under this chapter. I have particularly municipality.
Sure, I'm happy to kind of talk a little bit about that. Unfortunately, I can't give you concrete figures because it's obviously from year to year based on the number of forfeitures we do, the, the value of the different forfeitures. Also, it's going to depend a little bit on how this gets construed. Um, if it gets construed as you get reimbursed kind of through, as the forfeiture is done. So for example, if we have a forfeiture of $2,000 and that money can only be used to reimburse the investigation that led to seizure of that $2,000, that is going to probably see a far less, false, far smaller amount of money make its way to DHHS than if the forfeiture were, whether we could take all the forfeitures in aggregate and reimburse costs. The issues here are some of the, and some of the other issues that tie into this in terms of reimbursement and relying upon reimbursement is the fact that from seizure of the funds to kind of final disposition of the forfeiture proceeding, that can take months, if not years, to complete. And that is a required aspect before forfeiture can be completed and the department receives those funds, is that there has to be a conviction and then the forfeiture proceeding resolves. And so there isn't, you know, there isn't kind of this, there, there's going to need to be essentially before that reimbursement can occur, that money is being put forward by taxes at that point. I mean, if there's no other fund to draw upon. And I really hope you can hear me because you all have stopped moving.
Oh, uh, we can hear you, yes.
Okay, good.
I'm glad you can still talk. Could, could you just give a rough estimate of what proportion of the $500,000, uh, it's actually under $500,000, but, uh, comes in to, um, this drug forfeiture fund that would be available to go out, um, after the forfeiture and direct costs?
I, I don't know if I can give you a good estimate of that. Honestly, I've worked, I spoke with our Director of Administration about what that would look like. And it's just, it's such a fundamental change to the model. We'd have to account for kind of all the hours that are put into just doing forfeitures on our end, let alone the 10 county attorney's offices and hundreds of police departments that do this work across the state. Uh, we don't, those numbers, we just don't have access to, to make that determination on their end.
Would you say that, that at most half of the money available in that fund would be able to, to go on to, uh, to determination by the Department of Health and Human Services?
Uh, did you say it most half? I, that would probably be on the generous end. I think after the reimbursements, there would not be a substantial amount of money left to go forward to the Department of Health and Services.
Thank you. Uh, so now I think we can go back. There are four hands under panelists. The first is Representative Lori. He's had his hand up the number for quite a while.
He's disappeared from my list. Here, I got it.
There, can you hear me now?
You're very faint. If you could speak up, Representative Lori.
Okay, I put this brand new headset, uh, as close as I can to my mouth. Is this, uh, much better?
Not, yeah, if you can yell, it is.
Okay there.
Headsets mess up with this system.
Yeah. I've had a long talk with my chief. He needs the money from this and Route 111 through Hudson is a corridor. Um, they did a study on stops and a guy here in town, even went as far as suing the police department only to find out that, uh, uh, the number of, uh, people stopped with, quote, Hispanic, were actually carrying drugs, uh, because they had masked plates. They were coming up from Lawrence. The issue is not whether or not we need drug enforcement money as Jim, Representative Spillane had said. The issue is what accounting takes place. I don't want to attack the Attorney General's office, but Attorney Locke just said, we just don't have the numbers. Well, the question is, who is keeping track of the numbers? What is happening? Where is the money going? Uh, not to individual, uh, uh, CEO, not CEOs, but, uh, uh, informing witnesses or, or, uh, or for buying this apartment at this location for a drug buy. I don't care about that. I just want the general categories out where they can be seen in public and people know that this money isn't a slush fund for the AG and for the police departments. They need the money. But as the vote in the House showed, no one knows where this money is. It's a big black hole. And in other states have reflected negatively upon the good work in New Hampshire because of their behavior. So we need to get this right and I would strongly recommend that we retain this and get it right so that we can push it forward next year. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Representative Abrahmi was next.
Uh, just a couple, a couple of thoughts. Um, if you read the current statute, one thing that goes away is that, uh, revolving the, the drug forfeiture fund in excess of a million dollars, anything above a million dollars, uh, is created to the general fund. Uh, that's, that goes away with this amendment because it's under the same section as, uh, as section, uh, of 17C. So that's one, one thought. The other one is what I'd like to hear from, uh, I, I guess there's two issues outstanding. There's concern about transparency, but, but the, what does, what does the AG's office, Sean Locke, uh, do in terms of, of reporting annually to the governor and the executive council? I mean, what is presented to them? And number one, and number two, uh, for, um, for good representative, uh, 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 on the, um, prime sponsor, uh, and, and for, uh, Representative Bernstein, there's a contradiction, uh, in what's being said. Because Representative Bernstein said that actually the police, the enforcement officers would get more, uh, funds from this amendment. And, but the prime sponsor is arguing that, that, that they're getting too much and that we need more to go to the, to the, uh, treatment. So I, I'm not quite sure what it is, which way, you know, I, I need, uh, I need Representative Spillane to try to react to that. And perhaps Sean Locke could react to my first comment as well.
Um, Representative Almy, would you like me to recognize, um, Representative Spillane first?
Uh, okay, go ahead. Uh, we, we cannot spend the whole two hours on this. We cannot spend the whole two hours on this.
Thank you, Madam Chair, thank you for the question, Representative Abramey. I think that the way I heard Representative Bernstein's comment, he was saying it is possible that a police department could get more under the new way of doing this. And that is because we are actually taking into account their actual reimbursement for their costs that they've expended, rather than just giving them a lump sum or a disbursement in general. So, yes, there's, because we also take that out first, there's a chance that DHHS doesn't get much. But on those large drug busts and those large confiscations, once the conviction is made and we reimburse all the expenses incurred through the arrest and the trial, DHHS will get some money. And no, it's not a dependable amount. But every bit that we can give to some of these treatment facilities helps.
Thank you. I want to recognize Representative Lang and then Representative Bernstein, and then Representative Southworth. And then I want to call on Chris Shea with a question.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. So I guess my question is, I'm a little confused by the conversation that it will cost taxpayers money because in the amendment at least, it reimburses all the cost of an investigation back to the law enforcement agency for the seizure. So I don't see a taxpayer paying a fee here that they're not already paying. So they're getting the same reimbursement. I think the issue at hand is that, under the current law, forty-five percent of the funds are returned to the arresting agency responsible for the seizure. And yet, there's no direct correlation of forty-five percent was relative to their cost. It could have cost them more than forty-five percent of the seizure, it could have cost them less than forty-five percent of the seizure. I think what this bill and amendment is trying to do is to not make this, or is to make sure that agencies get the appropriate amount of money. If it's more than forty-five percent, they'll get more than forty-five percent. If it's less than forty-five percent, then they'll recoup their costs and not create a fund to start doing other investigations that may or may not be appropriate. So, I think it's reimbursing for the prosecutions that are necessary that result in forfeiture and then sending the rest of the money over to treatment where it belongs. So I guess unless I'm reading that wrong, I don't see an expense going back to the taxpayer for these events, that in fact, the agencies are being reimbursed for the actual cost and not just an arbitrary forty-five percent number that isn't relative to their costs at all. I guess I want to make sure I'm reading that right.
Thank you. I think it's in the eye of whoever is doing the accounting of this. But Representative Bernstein?
Thank you. Let me address what Representative Abramey said about we struck the million dollars out of that. Any money in excess of that would go to the general fund. I'm just looking at the past four years, how much money came in, and we've never even approached a million dollars. I think that the most we did was in fiscal 2018 where we took in a little more than half a million dollars. Other than that, the years I'm looking at, around two hundred thousand for two years, and three hundred and sixty-seven thousand for one of the other years. Of that money, DHHS got thirty-six, or for 2019, DHHS got thirty-six thousand. DOJ got a hundred and sixty-nine thousand, and local police and state police got a hundred and sixty-one thousand. Look, we're not trying to cut anybody's budget here. And I would suggest that interdiction should not be funded this way. They go through a budget process like every other agency. We're just trying to steer more money towards DHHS. In some cases, and as we crafted this amendment, Representative Spleen and I were well aware of this, that there can be some cases where law enforcement will get a bigger reimbursement than they got before. They should get, if they have out-of-pocket expenses, by all means, they should be reimbursed for those. The bill, and I believe everyone on this call voted yes the first time around. That doesn't bind you the second time around. But I'm under the impression that there's an appetite for this, to get more funding towards treatment. If your opinion has changed on that, I'd love to know that. But I'm operating under the premise that one hundred percent of the Ways and Means Committee supported this the first time, and that's why I'm working so hard to try and address the technical problems.
Thank you. I don't believe very many of us had read the bill originally. So, the first committee vote is always something that we have to take a look at when we do see the bill. But Representative Southworth was next, and then I do want to ask Chris Shea to talk to us as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Am I on now?
Yes.
Again, thank you. I wanted to echo the comments of my usual seatmate, Representative Ulrich. I'm just wondering at what point it would be in order to do a straw vote for those who are interested in retaining this bill and really fixing it for the future.
I have difficulty in figuring out. It just occurred to me last night that we might want to do straw votes. I don't think we're allowed to do straw votes. Are we, Jen?
I don't know that you're not allowed per se, especially since it's not an official vote by any means. And so you're making clear that it's a straw vote. I'm not sure the best way that you would want to approach that since you generally just do a raising of hands. You could probably try to do that virtually if you wanted to.
And we can't see everybody.
Well, I mean, you could do the raise hand function.
Oh, yeah, right. Okay. And I would, before we do, oh, Representative Willis had his hand up earlier and it's back. Representative Willis Griffiths, excuse me.
It's okay. I'm curious if we can use the poll function through Zoom to do something like that.
I don't think that we have that available in this.
Okay.
Yeah, so it'd have to be raising hands. And we need to, I want us to listen to Christopher, Chris Shea from LBAO. He is not from the audit division. I can't remember whether he has ever been on the audit division. But whether he thinks that a performance audit of the accounting by DOJ for this program is something that could be done. And he may not want to opine on whether it would be useful or not.
Rep. Abramey, I heard the question. And yes, I did work on the audit division for, on the performance audit, actually, for ten years. You could do a performance audit. As part of a performance audit, they would look at the finances. But what they would be probably focused on, and I say probably because performance audits go through the joint committee. So they would give the charge to the performance audit oversight committee would give the charge to our auditors as to what they would like addressed. But if you're looking at efficiencies or effectiveness of how the money's being spent or if it's being spent in the places that the legislature thought it was going based on the way the statutes are written, that's certainly something a performance audit could look at. If you're more interested in accounting for, did money go to the right agencies in the right amounts? That might be a financial audit. But a performance audit could look at that as well.
And a performance audit could look at whether the accounting was broken down in sufficient detail to be able to figure out whether it was doing what the legislature wanted?
That's correct. Yeah, the performance audits, they would do that as part of a performance audit. They would look at the money that's been appropriated to a program that's being audited, and is it being spent the correct way? It's just not a financial audit. It's just more of a view of the accounting. But the audit has the ability to bring financial auditors in if necessary, if they wanted more of a financial audit that they could include as part of a performance audit. But I think depending on the scope of the question, definitely a performance audit could be done. And it might be useful in terms of just understanding whether this particular fund is paying for the programs that it was intended to pay for and achieving the results that were expected. And then just making sure the money goes to the right buckets. Hopefully that helps with the question.
Thank you. And the last question for that is, has the Department of Justice had a performance audit ever? Is this allowed?
Performance audit be done of the Department of Justice?
Yes.
Oh, yeah, yep. So, I mean, depending on the type of audit, I mean, the type of information we look at, you know, would be kept confidential, right? So we wouldn't be in an audit. You never see names in an audit. We try to generalize, you know, the agency that was responsible for a particular function, that they do the job they were asked to do. And then what results did you see from that? So that would be kind of a general focus of a performance audit. But yeah, in terms of this where it's a fund, you would be basically looking at probably several different agencies that get the money from the fund, right? Because Health and Human Services gets a piece of this. You'd be looking at, you know, is the accounting done by the Attorney General correct in terms of how much percent goes to each bucket? And then following each of the buckets to see that that money's spent the way that it was intended. But yes, our office could do an audit of the Attorney General's office.
Thank you. And it probably wouldn't be able to start until late in the year or next year?
Right. So again, with performance audits, there's the Legislative Performance Audit and Oversight Committee that directs the topics that they'd like audited and a list of topics that are kind of in play at the moment. So our auditors are, two audits were just ending, so they would be starting to audit performance. And one was just started when we exited the building back in March. It would probably not happen until later year or early next year that they would get a chance to start that.
Thank you very much. I think that helps to clarify that particular option.
You're welcome.
I believe that we have several options here. The option we do not have is to do a substantial further amendment of this amendment, unless we, unless it is done within the next couple of days and available to the whole committee on next week, at which time there would probably be a fair amount of discussion of it. And I guess at that point, we would be able to re, to do the discussion again in the exec session. Which exec session is going to have to be short whenever it is because we don't have, we don't get much more bandwidth out of the general court for this. Or whether, or at that point, motions of the other kinds, which would be either interim study or ITL to allow the sponsors to develop it again. If we did an ITL, I believe with interim study, we don't get to write anything? Or do we, Jen? I can't remember now.
The interim study motion will go to the full chamber. Whereas retained bill, you would keep with you.
Yeah, so the interns, no, we can't do a retained bill. That's first term.
The theory is interim study, and there is a committee report.
Yeah, so there is a committee report. So either of those could include a request for a performance audit if we wanted to go that route. So, I don't know if there's any further option in this. I'm not seeing any hands go up. So, let us try this. You can vote for as many of these as you want by raising your hand. This is a straw vote. It is totally non-binding. Just as the first committee vote is not binding on the second committee when it gets its own look at things. Representative Abramey has his hand up.
How would people on the phone do that?
It's star nine. People on the phone are going to hit star nine to raise their hands.
I'm sorry, I apologize. Thank you.
Yeah, so all hands down at the moment. We will go through these in this order. Revised amendment presented at the exec session, which looks like it's going to be just before or just after. If we do a revised amendment, I'm going to do it after we do the revenue estimates on the first of June, rather than before, because we're going to have to get the revenue estimates done, and I don't want people leaving. On revised amendment, at that time, the second one would be interim study with performance audit requests that we'd have to work out among ourselves over the next week. The third one would be without performance audit. The fourth one would be ITL, so it goes back to the first committee next time with performance audit request and then without. This is pretty complicated, but is that acceptable? So, for those of us who can raise our hands by Zoom and those who are doing it by star seven, a star nine, sorry, star nine, please you raise your hand if you would like to see us go forward with a revised amendment at the exec session. That seems to be, no, it's going up. Six. Anybody else? That's six, six votes. Remember, you can vote for multiples. The second is interim study with a performance audit request, which we would need to define so that we've got everybody. That is nine votes. Looks like that's the end of it. The third is interim study, no performance audit request. It looks like it's stuck at three. Three votes. The fourth is ITL with a performance audit request.
Representative?
Yes?
Representative Tucker, are you trying to get our attention?
Yes, I don't know how to raise my hand. So that's the one I, ITL is for me.
You want to be added to discount?
Yes, and maybe sometime you can send me a little message just to find that I have an iMac.
You go to other. It looks like we're stuck at nine on that one, too. And the fifth is ITL without a performance audit.
Oh, that's the one I want, yes.
You didn't want the other one?
Didn't want an audit. Didn't want an audit. I want just ITL. To get a clean start.
Okay, so I took it down to eight votes. And the one in attendees would be Mary Griffin?
That's right.
Okay, so so we've got five for that one. So by one vote, we've got interim study with a performance audit request coming out.
Yep.
We can think about those as we go through and, and we're both groups are going to do caucuses before the final event. And I would like to point out that we won't have the results of the performance audit back on in time for the interim study, if it's possible to do an interim study at all at this point. When we don't know when we're going to be able to get back together, except in this format, which takes a lot of staff time. But but that, that, that and then the ITL with a performance audit are the ones that captured the most votes. So we should be prepared to discuss those particularly in our caucuses and take them to the executive committee as, as necessary. Uh, executive vote. So does Representative Griffin want to talk?
No.
No, she flashed for a minute. Representative Lang wants to talk.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I guess my question was, could we do just a, some people may be holding off on what their recommendation is based on, we had five different options and now we're down to two. Can we just do another straw poll with just the option of, you know, fix the amendment and move it forward or ITL with the performance audit and see where those votes land? Because obviously if the sponsors are, know it's going to be ITL with performance audit, they may not bother worrying about to fix the amendment, but if they want to, if it looks like we have votes to fix the bill and move it forward, fix the amendment, then they need to work on that. So they need to know.
Well, that one was three, two votes short of the ITL and three votes short of the interim study. So if we're going to include that one, we'd have to do a three-way vote.
And I'm just looking to make sure that if the sponsors, if they're expected to move forward with the bill, with the amendment, that they have time to get the amendment ready or not waste their time.
Okay. One more time, we're going to have to do three-way, I'm afraid, because that's on the on that's the only way to include the revised amendment. The first choice is interim study with performance audit. The second choice is ITL with a performance audit. And the third choice is a revised amendment to be discussed at the executive session. So could everybody raise their hands? Who is in favor of interim study with a performance audit? I don't know if our votes are going to be any different. Now, they are different. Okay, this one has five votes this time. And on the second one is ITL with a performance audit. And that one has nine votes. And the third one is revised, a revised amendment. Oh.
Representative Tucker had raised her hand. Did you get that in the count?
Oh, no. So that's 10 votes, you mean?
I believe so. Is that correct, Representative Tucker?
Correct. Correct. Okay, so that's 10 votes. And on a revised amendment to be discussed and voted on at the executive session. Please raise your hands. The number seems to be going up and down. Did Representative Griffin vote? Griffith Griffin vote, Mary?
I was trying to get, and I punched the wrong, the wrong buttons.
Okay, so which one are you on?
Uh, the, the IT, the ITL with, with an audit, is that what I heard?
Yes.
Yes.
Oh, okay. So that, that's up to 11 and we have five for the revised amendment. So the revised amendment and the interim study with performance audit tie this time and we have 11 votes for, which is a majority of the committee for ITL with a performance audit request. On we can consider other motions when we get to the exec session, but we aren't going to have a whole lot of time. I would like to see someone from the group that is doing the amendment work with us on what we would ask the performance audit committee to look at because it's, it's quite important that we have the, the questions that are necessary to get at how they are using the money and on, and how the, how that money shows up in the accounting in. And I'd like to invite Representatives Stringham, who noticed this problem to weigh in on that too. Maybe we can try to send around a draft. I might, I think I will try to get Chris Shea to, to help us with a basic draft of a request. I don't know if that's appropriate, but I'll ask him. And then we could work on refining it to make sure that it does what it's, would be supposed to do. Which, when you do a performance audit, the results come out, it is a little rather slow. It's rather expensive too. But the results come out as a report to the fiscal committee and the document is released on the LBO pages for anybody to read and the department is requested to respond to the fiscal committee to, to the audit department and then the fiscal committee receives information on whether the department wants, is willing to make the changes that were requested of it by the audit. And it gets followed up on in future years. So it is a pretty powerful, if somewhat slow, tool.
Representative Almy, may I interject here, please?
Yes.
So yes, I could help you guys with a letter. And, and I suggested the letter would be to the Chair of the Committee, which is Senator Reagan currently in CC to our office. And what your committee would want to do is, as you've stated, identify what you potentially see as some issues and what you would like the audit to look at. That way, when the committee does convene, they have an idea of, you know, why the audit's being requested. In terms of if the audit is done, there's an audit report that is presented to the fiscal committee, but our auditors would also be willing to present that to the Ways and Means Committee in future. We're more than happy to take our audits on the road to the various committees. They want that.
That's, that's very helpful. Thank you. Yes, that, that has happened, not very often in Ways and Means, but it has happened in the past. Representative Griffin, did you want to talk?
No.
She keeps on turning on and off.
I dropped the phone.
Oh, okay. Ken, so I think that's enough at this point on HB 1563 for this work session. And we will be discussing these bills in, in caucuses before we get to the exec session and then again in the exec session. I think that we're going to have to put the exec session following the revenue estimates, to make sure we get the revenue estimates done. And we then turn to HB 1627 FN. I want to repeat that the reason that I have been working hard on this amendment with the sponsors is that, well, there are two reasons. One of them is that I, I and Representative Major have been on the Dedicated Fund Committee for quite a while and our committee is charged under roles with making sure that the dedicated funds operate, are set up properly in legislation and are reporting properly. So on, this bill came to us from Environment and Agriculture. There has had to be quite a lot of work done in terms of the of the specifics of when the money can be taken from other funds, when and if it gets back on. And a number of, of technical issues from the Policy Committee that got incorporated in as they, they moved it entirely to online. My second reason for working on this is that I do not believe it's appropriate that we have a department left in this state that cannot work virtually as necessary and on, online, to, to do online registration of health certificates and and on the other one, which I am forgetting which one it is at this point, but is going to reduce the staffing overload in the Department of Agriculture quite a lot. And we'll make it easier once it is set up for the veterinarians to, to work with this and for people to get information. Presumably for people to get information when there's been a rabies bite or something of that sort. So I had an amendment that, the last piece of which unfortunately just came out last night. That is because I was told that if we do not separate out the, very clearly the dates of permission and repeal of different transfers into all of the component parts that OLS would change the amendment when it came to them. And we don't want to do that again. Part of the problem has been that we took the amendment to OLS and they said there is not sufficient specificity here. They put in the specificity and the department was not happy with the specificity and in fact it did not reflect the timetable of where the money is going back and forth. I don't know how many people have had a chance to look at the amended version this morning. But if Jen could pull it up. I the yellow pieces are the parts that were sent to everybody last week. And the, I believe it was last week. And the blue are, are, are really, as far as I can tell, technical corrections to that, to make sure that every single change in who can transfer money to whom and who can't is separated out in the enacting language and the repeal language at the proper times. So, and, and then at Chris Shea's suggestion, I also returned to the original idea, oh, sorry. Idea. I just managed to get myself out of this. Jennifer, if you can go one page down. Yes, there. To the original suggestion that we'd had, which is that I broke off section five from section four in the first section to allow the parts of this complex amendment that would be repealed after all of the transfers stopped to be removed cleanly from the language of the law so that they would, it would not be, be visible when it is no longer necessary for anything. The rest of section one ends with the database fund shall draw mon, oh, no, go back up a bit. Or I can read it off myself, but go back up a bit. There you go. The database fund shall draw monies only from grants, appropriations and the fees in RSA 4378A. It could just say the fees in 43, 4378A, but if they had some time got extra money to further develop the database, for instance, I wanted to leave that option in. Then section five is the part that gets repealed after five years. And it says that notwithstanding section four above, the fund shall be initiated by transfers from Agricultural Product and Scale Testing Fund on, on established and the Integrated Pest Management Fund. And after the animal records database is operational, the commissioner may reimburse the Agricultural Product and Scale Testing Fund and the Integrated Pest Management Fund over a period of five years as laid out in the sections that are towards the end of the bill. One of the things I learned during this process of amending was that the commissioner does not think he will be able to totally reimburse those funds over a period of time. We didn't want to leave this completely open-ended. Those two funds contain money that is going to have to be removed from there by law changes on, or over a very long period of time. On, removed by reducing fees somewhat, which fees would have to bounce back after that period of time. Because for three years, I think it is, they were collecting fees to pay for salaries that did not happen because people were not on, hired in those positions. I am not sure at this point whether they were not hired because the budget did not allow them to be hired at that time or whether it was that the previous commissioner did not hire. So but the money is there. It is not being used for the purposes of the fund and cannot be used unless they they expand what the, the fund is paying for inside the department, which they could do by themselves if they thought this was necessary. And so it is that money that would be being siphoned off to the other fund to create the database. And that there would be an option at the end of, in the last three years of that period to take the money back into those funds. And the commissioner has told me that he is not, he does not believe And the commissioner has told me that he is not, he does not believe that there would be sufficient money to reimburse all of it. So, that's the general situation as we found it out, as we did, as we tried to do this amendment. I don't know if Representative, I've lost the participants now, the attendees. If the commissioner or Representative Bixby for the Agriculture Committee wants to speak on what I've just said or, and correct me or otherwise.
Um, I think we have the Commissioner and Representative Bixby. Would you like me to bring them both on?
On, at the same time? Can you do that?
Or, or we could go one after the other.
Is, is 3551 the Commissioner?
That's what we think.
Okay, let's represent, let's recognize him to speak.
Good morning. I, I think that Chairman Almi has done a very good job of, of summarizing the situation and that very pleased with the, with the changes. I think that does exactly what, what our intent is. Be glad to answer any questions.
Thank you, that was very brief. Representative Bixby, do you want to say anything? There you are.
Yes. So, I was, I have one very small concern, which is on page two. It says, at the end of Section 4 and Section 1, it says the database shall only draw monies from grants, appropriations, and fees in RSA 437. In the next section, it says, notwithstanding the fund shall be initiated by transfers from Agricultural Products and Scale Testing Fund and the, and the Integrated Pest Management Fund. But it doesn't specify that those, the, the possible transfers from those funds in the first two years of operability, as, as mentioned in the later sections, would be allowed. And I, I just wanted to make sure that that, and I'm not sure if that, if those would be considered part of the initiation or if that needs to be further amended in order to take care of that.
Could I ask Chris Shea to weigh in on this? If he's still here with us? Yes, he is.
Can you hear me?
Yep.
Hold on, I lost the screen. Okay, so the question is. Go ahead.
On whether we ought, in lines 3 to 5, the yellow part, we ought to amend that to make reference, specific reference to, I guess it would be RS, on RSA on 4A and and 430, 43520 4A, which are further towards, at the end. Which are the ones that spend the money in the first, transfer the money in the first two years to the database.
So when, what I would suggest is that when this amendment is, when you decide that you want to have a final version of this, you know, OLS will draft it, but be clear that you want what pieces you want repealed when, and then what pieces you want remaining. And, and they would coordinate that with the, the repeals and the effective dates of those repeals. So if you needed certain language to still exist through the fifth year and, and that you see in the two-year part of it, then you would need to include it in both places. It's hard for me to, to respond greatly to this because I, I can't see it all at the moment.
Yeah, right.
And not having a lot of conversations that you've had. But I think that, again, the committee would want to be clear in the amendment what they anticipate is going to happen going forward. In five years from now, there's not people trying to figure out what did you intend to have happen?
Yes. So, so I think that that probably would mean a references right there to, to those. This is just as complicated as, as the drunk driving legislation was. This, that, that, that yellow section should include references to the parts below that are for, 4A and, and 5, at the very end, in about the second to last page. Yeah, that's, you're, you're, you're going through them now. Well, the, the As are refer, reference the first two years when the transfers are going out from those funds. This is all after the fund has been, been operationalized. So for two years after that, funds can continue to go out of the first two dedicate, the existing dedicated funds to support the new dedicated fund for the database. The Bs are after five years, all transfers end. And Section 5 in the blue says that at, at the end of that period, the authority of the Department of Agriculture to move money back and forth in any way ends. So that eliminates the section up at the beginning that we were looking at that was, is added on to the definition of the fund. It is repealed at that point. So, A, we can just look at Integrated Management Pest Management Fund, which is on there now and which you had before, except that I duplicated Roman 4, which was in there before, was, was a simple Roman 4 on referring to the transfers both during the first two years and during the last three years of that, the five years total. I separated them out into the part that would be allowed to transfer the first two years. That's A. And the part that would be allowed to be transferred, the second three years, the last of the five years, that's B. And then below that, the As and the Bs are repealed at two years and five years, respectively. So, it's.
We have a question for Representative Almi, if you're ready for them from-
Yes, yes, I think we're, it's time to go to the questions. And I believe Representative Shamber tried to put his hand up before I started this, so we'll go to him first.
Can you hear me?
Representative Shamber, can you unmute? Yes.
Yes, can you hear me now? All right.
Yes.
I appreciate all the hard work you did on this. On page two, the lines 3 through 7, you began, you said, notwithstanding Section 4, the fund shall be initiated. And then on line 6, the commissioner may reimburse. My question is, and I realize that there's going to be a shortfall in the future. If I was in charge of a department, would I not come before and have drafted or asked for more revenue from the general fund? I, I just don't like the idea. You've charged for people for agricultural products, scale testing fund fees, integrated pest management. They were going specifically toward that. When will this fund ever be reimbursed, all its money?
The two funds that need to be reimbursed, oh, Commissioner Jasper wanted to-
Yes, if, if I could. When we began this process, there was a lot of uncertainty about just what was going to be needed where. I, I'd still want to, to allow for some flexibility. I expect most of the money, if not all the money, to actually come out of the, the product and scale testing fund. That title is a little bit misleading, but that was the title that Commissioner Taylor chose decades ago. So most of this money, the money comes from product registration, and that's all animal feed, really. So, it is appropriate, and there is a nexus because so much of that is pet food. So, we believe that, that using that fund really does fulfill the mission because it goes to something that has to do with, with animals. So, we knew we were not going to get a general fund appropriation and had to try to be creative in how we could actually do this because it would take a lot more people to actually accomplish the goal of what the legislature has tasked us with doing, which is to develop all, all of these, the licensing procedure for all these pet vendors, which is just not humanly possible for us to do with the staff. We did get one more person on board, but we're still not doing what we should be doing. And so we did find the nexus. I think it's appropriate. And ultimately, that is your judgment call.
Commissioner Jasper? May I follow up with a question for the Commissioner? Madam Chair?
Yes, I have one too.
Commissioner Jasper, if the word "may" is turned to "shall", shall reimburse, does the five-year period give you enough time to maybe come up with an approach to the General Assembly to fulfill the amount of money that you would transfer out?
Perhaps, I'm a little concerned by the word "shall", but then I think it, it also says, under, you know, under the, another section of the RSA, which I think makes it clear that I don't have to if the money's not there. So, are we going to come up with another way? We don't know how much that, how much those fees are going to bring in. And again, I mean, this is really up to the legislature. We want to be reasonable with the fee. And at the same time, you know, have some hope of reimbursing it. My idea originally was to leave that open-ended. The legislature, to this point, has decided having that open-ended is not the best idea. So I thought, all right, well, maybe we'll do this in dribs and drabs, and it might take us a decade, but I understand the thought process there. So I think putting me in a little bit of an unfair situation where my idea was, let's do it over whatever period of time it takes, but the legislature is saying, no, you need to do it within five years. And so now asking me to come up with another way of accomplishing that, really not something I'm crazy about. I'd rather just leave the fund somewhat depleted.
Commissioner Jasper, well, I've got two questions now. One of them is, do you, this money that we're talking about in these dedicated funds is essentially one-time money? You are maintaining those two programs at the extent that you or the prior legislation considered necessary without that, that money. Is there something else that you can be doing in, in those areas? And I'm more concerned about the Integrated Pest Management Fund, which I don't think has nexus. Then, is there something else you can be doing with that money in the future to absorb it? Or, because alternatively, we ought to be either lowering, lowering the user fees, which would then require raising them again once the money was spent. Or we should rate it?
Thank you for the question. Yeah, that money was built up essentially as one-time money under the current mechanism that we're using it. This is excess money. However, you know, we all know what state the revenue is in. So frankly, one of my, my thoughts, which would, you know, be through the budget process, would be to look at actually using the excess revenues in there, above and beyond even this, to keep the department operating without layoffs. Because our, we produce revenue. Generally speaking, when you, when you look at what we bring in and what we use, and then what we turn over to the general fund, we are about a break, even if not a little bit net positive operation here. But if we are forced to do layoffs, we're likely to have a negative effect on the general, general fund with no real positive results of laying people off. So I'd like to be able to explore the possibility of keeping our ability to generate revenues going without, during this crisis, actually having a drawdown on the, on the general fund for our operations. So that's sort of where my thoughts are right now.
Thank you. We had Representative Stringham seems to be the only one with his hand up at the moment.
Yeah, first of all, Madam Chair, thank you for the great work on this amendment. If, if we're that seriously concerned we're not going to be able to replenish the fund at the end of five years, you know, you said you wanted to be kind of reasonable in terms of how much to charge for this. Is, $3 is not reasonable? Is, is $2, is there really something magical about the $2 number? And I know we talked about it a little bit before. But, you know, might we have a little extra wiggle room if we brought it up to $3 or, or somewhere between $2 and $3 per, per adoption?
If I may?
You may.
Well, being an old ways and meaner myself, I'm very cognizant of that 125% rule that try to operate within. And I think that going beyond that $2, you know, is sort of a, outside of that, that realm, even though we're, we're paying for something that, you know, is related to the fund, that's norm, not normally the way we, we do that. And I think there'll be a lot of pushback. We've already gotten some pushback, but in the, in the range of $2, I'm able to really say to the people who are going to be paying this fee, you're probably coming out about net neutral at that point because you've got postage to consider, you've got to make copies, you've got to put it in envelopes. There are all these things that you have to do versus if we do it electronically, you're going to save a lot on time and, and physical materials and postage. But we have gotten some pushback even at, at the level of going up to 2. My feeling was if, you know, the legislature doesn't, rightly so, want to give us a, an open end on the fee, we think that we're probably at $1.25, maybe $1.50. And by the time we got to that $2 range, it would be appropriate for us to come back and allow, and ask the legislature to allow us to raise that fee if it gets to that point of being necessary. Again, it's all, you know, your call. These were our, our suggestions on how to, how to do this and garner enough votes in the legislature and have the support of the governor to, to make this a reality.
Thank you for that. The other question I had for you, Madam Chair, was, why is, why is the the sunset provision on some of these provisions set at five years? For, for the provisions to affect, basically, to-
Well, that's something that perhaps we ought to discuss. 10 years seemed much too long legislatively that we would forget that this sunset was in there at all. And a future Commissioner of Ag Culture might happily go along continuing the previous procedures without realizing that it had sunsetted. This has happened quite frequently in the legislature, partly because things like that are put into chapter law, and the chapter law is only available to some people, mostly LBAO. And so, you discover provisions such as one that we just discovered that, the Senate just discovered that the ERZ program, the Economic Revitalization Zone Program, sunsets in January and has a bill that they put in hurriedly to fix that, that they added complications to that we haven't got yet. But the program sunsets in January. And so, we have to make a decision this year, and we're in COVID. And that kind of thing has happened a number of times over the years, that something is in chapter law and we do not remember it. The commissioner changes, the commissioner doesn't remember it. So, it just seemed like 10 years was too long. But I would welcome Commissioner Jasper's thoughts on this or anyone else who wants to.
Madam Chairman, I think certainly that, you know, if we stay with the five years, we can revisit the situation in five years and see what the legislature would like to do at that point. But unless there are any direct questions for me right now, unfortunately, I'm on a rather tight schedule, and I really need to drop off the call in the next couple of minutes.
Could you give me a minute on why the Integrated Pest Management Fund is, has a nexus?
It really, it really doesn't. That's a, you know, but the legislature is always free to do what it wants, as we know. Far too many funds have been raided, and we just looked at this as where there was available funding without totally drawing down on the other fund. Because obviously, we have a guesstimate as to what this program's going to cost us, but until we actually go out to bid, we're not going to know. And so, I didn't want to leave us in a situation where we were depleting one account and had too much money there. You're correct, there's no nexus. Again, that is the, it's within the purview of the legislature to draw money from wherever it exists.
So, if we directed you to reimburse that one first before the other one, which does have clear nexus?
That would be very reasonable, in my opinion, yes.
Thank you. Representative Abramey wanted to talk.
Am I on? Okay. Just so, just big picture, we're all kind of held hostage by not having our notes with us from the hearing. They're kind of being held hostage in the LOB, getting into the LOB. But I have a question. $2 fees, there's three places where there's a $2 fee. Those are all new, correct? And number one, and number two, they will, initially, those fees will go to this development as well of the new computer system?
If I may, the fees are intended to go to the annual maintenance cost of the program. That's the primary purpose. Again, we don't have set numbers, but we're, we've been told to expect that the maintenance of this program is in the range of about $250,000 a year.
Commissioner Jasper, I believe we only have two fees in this, not three, correct?
I believe you're right, but I've sort of forgotten about this, the details of this bill. It's been a while now.
The analysis indicates two, and I've only been dealing with two.
If I may?
Yes.
Can I, am I being heard?
Yes, Representative Bixby.
So, there are, if you look at it one way, there are three because there is a, there's the health certificate, there's a health certificate waiver, and those could, logically, those are lumped as one sort of thing. But you could see that as being two separate fees, one if you get the health certificate, one if you get the health certificate waiver. But you would not, you would never have someone who got both the health certificate and the waiver. So, and then, separate from that, there is the fee for the rabies vaccination certificate.
Thank you.
Representative Abramey has a follow-up. And would you like me to screen share, or would you like to keep that up?
Oh, I think, can we put down the screen share? Okay, remove that, Representative Abramey, sorry.
Yeah, so just to clarify, so that first year, while the product, the computer system's being developed the first couple of years, will we start collecting these fees on day one? And where would that money go? Wouldn't it go to the development of the program as well?
If I may? No, that's why we put the certification in there that until such time as the commissioner certifies that the program is operational, no fees will be collected. It would be, you know, in my opinion, unfair to have people have to send in potentially the paper documents and at the same time, pay a fee for the electronic program, which doesn't exist. So, no fees until we're live.
Okay, thank you.
If I could follow up on that one, Commissioner Jasper? You have a 90-day period in your timeline, which suggests that during that period, some people, I guess, would be using this now operational system and paying the fee, and other people would be using the paper system.
I believe you're correct because with anything, it's going to take some live time to determine whether the program is fully operational or not. We would probably pick a few communities to try it out. These are very complicated. We're trying to switch over in weights and measures right now. This has been a process that's been going on for a couple of years and very, very complicated. So, we anticipate they'll be hopefully not as complicated because we're creating a new program versus trying to swap one over. But unless you have anything pressing for me, I do have to go, and I apologize for that.
Thank you so much for your time. And I think Representative Bixby may be able to answer further questions.
I believe he will. He's been very involved in this. Thank you all very much.
Okay, yes, we're into lunchtime now. Is there anyone else who has a question? I don't see a hand up or a comment. Okay. So, does anyone have any suggestions for a different amendment? Or we can discuss actual motions at our caucuses and come to the exec with it? If no one has anything further on this amendment, I believe that we can close the work session on HB 1627.
Would you like to thank the committee for all the hard work you've done?
Thank you, Representative Bixby. And we can close the work session. Is, there is nobody who is raising their hand for any further purpose? So, I am going to end this work session. We will be meeting again to do revenue estimate. Oh, sorry, have we lost some of us?
Hello. Yeah, we have a second set part of this.
Have another part of this, which is fairly small, but which is why Chris Shea has been politely sitting through all of this and helping us out occasionally. Have we lost any members that we need to call back?
I'm not sure that anyone has left just in this moment. I think we've lost one or two along the way today.
Yeah.
Representative has a question.
Yes, she does. Representative Gamala.
Willis said he'll come back if he can. And the amendment for this previous bill we were speaking of didn't have the blue things, the blue additions on my copy. Maybe you can...
I sent it late last night to everybody.
Well, I guess I was looking at Jennifer's email, maybe from...
Yeah, I did get to check that one out.
I sent it just after, I think you sent the other one. I've been working on things till quite late at night, I apologize. So, we did want to briefly go through the, with Chris Shea, just what these new forms we're going to use for revenue estimates are next week. For any attendees that are listening, this is just going to be boring. If you want to listen to the presentations on revenue estimates, they are really going to be a week from now. So, Chris, can you talk to us?
Yes, Representative Abramey, thank you for that introduction. So, I'm the... So, there was an email, as part of the email that you received yesterday, you've got an Excel worksheet. And I can share my screen to show it again to you, but it's the same, basically the same sheet that... All right, is that showing up for you guys?
Yes.
All right, so it's essentially the same worksheet that you've seen if you've been on the Ways and Means Committee year after year. What's different is that we're going to have an agency low and high ranges, and then House Ways and Means low and high ranges as you do your estimates. And that change has been made on each of the three tabs. When you get, I'm going to email you guys this again Friday later in the day, potentially Saturday, depending on when I get some of the agency responses. What you will get is hopefully a populated worksheet on Friday for the agency information, so that when you're sitting in the meeting on the 27th, you'll have an idea, if you have this worksheet up, what the agency's providing for revenue estimates or ideas for revenue estimates. Additionally, I will be sending out the agency-written information. So, you'll all get that as part of the email, and these documents will all be available on the General Court website the day of the meeting as well. But Representative Abramey just wanted me to make sure that you knew you're going to get the worksheet. It was going to be a live Excel worksheet that you could plug information in, make notes in it, whatever you need to do for each of the, you know, various funding, funds that you are going to make estimates on. One, I'm in the highway worksheet right now, and just so you understand, if you were to compare the official plan of 259-4 in column D, so that was what your estimates were last time you did the revenues for the budget. If you go to the revenue plan, you're going to see a number of 227.6. That's because the administrative services backs out that cost of collections, and that's what I show you in column E. I've also been scheduling people to present to you on the 27th. So, you're going to start with Phil Sletton, New Hampshire Fiscal Policy Institute. He'll talk to you starting at 9:30 until about 10:00. And then, from 10:00 to about noonish, DRA will present on the various revenues that they're responsible for collecting and any information that they can provide the committee that might be helpful. Around 1 o'clock, I believe, the Chamber of Commerce will come on to the Zoom meeting. And there's two individuals that are representing the Chamber of Commerce that will talk about some of the impacts there, the businesses they represent are experiencing. And then, starting at 1:30, you'll have the Department of, the Insurance Department, Liquor Commission, Lottery Commission, and Department of Safety all doing brief presentations to you on their revenues. And then, the remaining agencies, and I'll provide this list to you, will be available to answer questions, but they're not being asked to present. And part of the reason is because of the format that's being used and the need to kind of streamline some of the ability to get information out. We just ask them to be available in case you had questions. If you receive the information Friday, and you're looking at it over, you know, over the long weekend, and you start to think of questions as it might relate to a particular revenue source or you have another piece of information that you're like, oh, I know Agency X collects Y, send me an email, and then I can reach out to the agency and either try to get that information prior to the 27th or at least make the agency aware that they may have a question coming to them so that they're prepared to respond to you. Again, the effort is to get you as much of the information you need as quickly as we can so that you can come back on June 1st and make the official estimates that you want. And that's really all I had, unless there's a question for me.
That's very well put, thank you, Chris. So, you hope we're going to get them by Friday, but it might be Saturday.
Yes, so I've asked agencies to provide me all their information by Friday. The challenge would be what time on Friday I get it, and when I get to update the worksheet and then get it out to you.
Right.
But I will get it to you as quickly as I can. And again, it'll be a live Excel sheet so that you can make notes, you know, put numbers in it that you might want to just see how they look. And then, all the supporting documents that the agency is providing, I'll also forward to you at the same time, just so you have an opportunity to look at that.
And will you forward those emails to us individually for every single agency that reported to you? Or are you going to combine them into one large document?
I'm hoping just to send one large email.
Thank you.
It'll be easily found, you know, that you'll be looking for a single email from me. We'll have everything. If it's too much information, if the documents are too large for whatever reason, maybe I need to break it into two or three emails, but I'll try to send them back to back to back so you can find everything pretty easily.
And number them things like email one out of three.
Yep, yep. And as I said, is, you know, might email me if you have any questions or for some reason you're not getting something that you thought you should get. Feel free to reach out to me, and we'll try to get it resolved.
Thank you. Representative Shenberg has a question or a comment.
Chris, are you going to take the general fund spreadsheet and break it down into an eight and a half by 11?
So, I will set, put the settings at eight and a half by 11. So, if somebody chooses to print it, it'll not cause you problems.
Thank you.
That was one technical issue that Representative Shenberg identified. I hadn't reset the Excel sheet to be eight and a half by 11, which is probably what you're printing.
Yes, I believe I did a certain amount of making the columns narrower in order to achieve the same thing, but it's much better if you do it. Representative Abramey had a question.
This is for Chris. Chris, I just want to make sure that all agencies are going to do the high and low, or which ones aren't going to do high and low?
So, not every agency will give you a high and a low. There are some that are doing that in the material I'm seeing. Some are just giving you a number. You know, they think they have a pretty good idea what they think 20 is going to end at, and they're just providing a number. In those cases, in your high and low, I'll put the same number, obviously. But there are some that are saying that, you know, especially for 21, if they're giving you any information for 21, they're saying it's too early to really know where it's going to land, so they're giving you a high and a low.
Okay, thank you.
And Representative Major.
Yes, Chris, to reach out to you, we use your legislative email only?
Yes, please.
Okay.
Yes, and he is available weekends as necessary. I wish there was a way that we could avoid this kind of thing, but, but he's been very good about it. Any further questions or discussion about how we're going to do the revenue estimates? I think all of us have been through this before, including Tim Lang, who was on the committee for two terms, three, before he went off. So, we do have Representative Abrahmi raising his hand again.
Yeah, I just want to make sure we all understand. Obviously, we usually go around the room. We talk about the revenues. I just want to make sure I understand how we're actually going to vote on these revenues. Obviously, I know we vote on each line, high-low. I guess we're going to do a high-low vote. Thought through how we're gonna, this is a little more difficult doing it via Zoom for some reason. So, is the...
I, I think what we're going to be able to do is, is going to have to do is just raise hands. This will be on the first of January, of June, January, June. We're, we're going to be discussing them, which means that if you've got something you want to discuss about each revenue as we go along, you raise your hand and you talk. And then we'll have to do a little talking on at least some of them before we try to, to vote on numbers on the first. But the idea is that we'll get substantial input during, on the 27th. And then each party will hold a caucus and discuss it further, and then we'll get back together on the first and do, hopefully not a whole lot more conversation, but there might be, on and vote on each of these by raising our hands, unless there's some way to add the, the other hand raising version, the yes/no version onto this, but there probably isn't without a lot of trouble.
Representative, Representative, I'm still, I guess I'm still unmuted. So, so what we're saying, do first, we, we're going to come in with, there could be 20 different versions of this. Or we can go to the Republican version and the Democrat version consensus, and then we vote on those, or come to compromise on those? Because there could be upwards of, there could be upwards of 20 opinions on each one. So, you know, I, I just posed that as a question. I, as, whatever methodology you want to use is fine with me, but...
Representative Major would like to chime in, if that's okay?
Yes, Representative Major.
Thank you. After the 27th, I would plan to have a Republican caucus to stop talking about revenues of the caucus. I assume you're going to do the same thing, Susan.
Yes.
And then, so that we can go over it, and if we have questions as a result of what we heard on the 27th and our discussion on the 28th, we can get those to Chris, so we can get the most up-to-date information. And we probably would have another caucus prior to June 1st. We don't have much time.
Yeah, we don't have much time. And you, you are busy, I think, all day on the 29th.
Yes. Oh, God, yes. We've got a...
Which is a further problem.
We have a delegation of 90 representatives that we have to vote on the budget and all that.
Representative Tucker is raising her hand physically.
Yes. So, will we have to take a roll call vote on this as a whole? Or do you intend to take a roll call vote on each category?
We're going to have, under this format, we are required to take a roll, actually, you're correct. I said raise hands on, once we get to the, to June 1st, we're going to be having to take a roll call vote on every single tax or fee or revenue, whatever it is.
Right. That's right. I assumed would the case.
Yeah. And I'd like just quickly to point out to you, if you go to, I think it's the lower right on the Mac, and you, there's an other there, or three dots.
I now have found it.
Thank you. Okay, Representative Abrahmi, begin.
So, again, I think we're getting there. So, so we're going to have, Republicans have a caucus, Democrats have a caucus. I guess we'll come to terms with high-low. Versions appear on what Chris is going to present on the first. I mean, it isn't like we're going to vote on the Republican or Democrat. Maybe, based on the discussion that day, we'll say, well, you know, we can compromise on a certain number. Is that, I'm trying to envision how it's going to work. That's why I'm asking.
Well, I think we have to do a certain amount of discussing of these, not just listen to the agency while we're going through the revenues, but do a certain amount of discussion if, to see if someone has particular concerns from one side on particular revenues, and if there's any way that we can try to resolve them with Chris Shea or otherwise before the first, we can, and otherwise, we're just going to have to... We've done this in the past, and we've, we've met in caucuses, and then we've gotten together. And we are not, we are not necessarily voting in caucuses when we, when we get together again. People listen to each other and go around the room, and usually in a straw vote, which I guess we can't do. I'm going to have to ask about that. And, and people all of a sudden say, oh, well, I voted this way differently from the rest of you because, because of this item that all of us hadn't thought about. And so, we, we all think about it at that point and adjust accordingly what each of us was willing to vote, vote on. But we haven't, I guess there have been a few times when we have voted a party line when we got to revenues. I, not, I think I remember one. And there, there, in other times, people, they've been listening within their caucus. The caucuses give us a chance to spend more time talking about these. That's the problem.
Representative, I didn't mean to make it sound like, I enjoyed the way we've done this in the past. Nonpartisan, and it's, it's, it's great. And I, I just thought, I was trying to figure out what the starting point is.
Yeah. Yeah.
And then, and then somebody say, well, I think it's going to be this. And sometimes, usually, it's only five or six people who speak up with their idea of what a number is going to be. And then we kind of come to consensus, which is fine. It just, it just seems like it's going to be a little harder to come to consensus on Zoom, just speaking, that's all.
It will, but it has to be as much as possible a public process. We've never really done it as a public process, because nobody has ever bothered to come into the committee room, except occasionally a reporter who wasn't involved with it. But I think that, that we have to make a start at it on the 27th. We aren't just there on the 27th to listen to what they say. We're there to ask questions and to bring up extra factors that hadn't, we think hadn't been considered. And hopefully, we can take that back to the two caucuses and talk about it further and try to, to resolve some parts of the process, and then bring it back on the, on June 1, and discuss it publicly and get numbers out there.
Representative Southworth has a question.
Representative Southworth.
Thank you. Just one idea, perhaps, after the caucuses, to make it easier. What if each caucus had a primary spokesperson when you got to each section? Still, other people could speak, but if there was one person that you knew was always going to kind of give a little presentation from that caucus, it would go a lot more quickly. You could still do some consensus, you know, votes. But really, I just think sometimes when we're doing it too random, it just takes a little more time bouncing around and so on. Just a thought.
It does, but sometimes one person has an idea, as Representative Ullery did, actually, for the, the electric cars problem.
Yeah, I want to allow for that.
Nobody else has thought about before.
Yeah.
And it's important they be able to speak also, and that it not be considered necessarily a caucus thing.
No, I agree with that. I'm not trying to stop that. I'm just saying to always get us started. When you say business taxes, there'll be a person from each caucus already to do a little something. Then you can add anyone else you want.
Okay. Or who wants to. Yes. Okay, that's a good idea, if it's okay with Representative Major.
And advice to every member of the committee is do your homework before the 27th. Review your notes. Ask good questions. That's what, that's what we're here for, to get information. And then, and then, after we get through with all the agencies, the day after, we can have our separate caucuses discuss these issues that we have. And hopefully, as a caucus comes to consensus, Susan and I will be communicating with each other in the caucuses, because she could point out something that we didn't consider, and maybe I could point out something to her that they hadn't considered.
Right.
And come up with a bipartisan agreement.
Right. And make... And at least know places where we're going to have to do more discussion on the first.
But it's very important. Do your homework before we sit down on the 27th with the agencies. Thanks.
Yeah, most of us don't have a Memorial Day parade. We can dedicate it to this.
It was just canceled this morning.
Yeah. We have a small memorial event by a few veterans only, so. Okay.
Representative Tucker and Gomarlo have questions?
Ah, okay. Representative Tucker.
It isn't a question. It's really an encouragement to, the sooner we can set the time for the caucus, the better.
Right.
Because I think it's very important that each group be able to meet as a caucus and have everyone there.
Yes.
Knowing well, knowing ahead, or whatever, I think is really useful. And I know your life is very complex. Your clerk could give you a hand or, or...
Yes. Okay. And I'd just like to throw out that the, I'm not sure whether all of our caucus members could get together on Friday. That's when Rockingham is working all day long. Or whether you'd rather that we did it on Thursday or Saturday? Or is Representative Stringham still with us? I can't see part of the screen because of the hand raising stuff. Yes, there you are. Rep, Rep...
Post is a Zoom meeting, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, if we did it on a Saturday. I don't know whether people are in for that idea or not. But think about it, and, and someone will be contacting you.
I'm supposed to be delivering masks from 10 to 2.
On Saturday. Okay, that sounds like a good thing to do. Representative Gamarla.
Oh, I was just going to ask if Chris was going to do a, a share of that Excel sheet and fill in the blanks like Willis did for us before. And that would be very helpful.
So, on the first, when you guys are meeting, I can certainly do that. Yep.
Okay.
Representative Southworth raised his hand.
Representative Southworth.
Yes, I just wanted to make sure, is there really a conflict on Friday? I thought the Rockingham people didn't say it was a conflict. I'm trying to remember.
Yeah, I thought so, too.
Well, if it isn't for most, for our side, we could meet on Friday.
Representative Ullery has raised his hand.
Representative Ullery?
Yes.
Was that who you said?
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
I'm just saying that I have to, I have a 1:00 conference call with somebody at the Naval Observatory, so...
So, you have to get off right now.
Yeah, well, a few minutes anyway, yeah.
Yeah. I think we're, we're pretty much finished. On the Democratic side, morning or afternoon to start. Representative Ames?
Fine, anytime.
Okay. Representative Major had his hand up.
Yeah. We, we will be busy in Rockingham all Friday. We may have to have another day, too. We have to, it's our budget, the county, taking votes by departments. It's going to take forever. But I plan on having a caucus on Thursday, the 28th, starting at 10:00.
Okay. So, that, that gives us the two caucus states. The 28th, on the Democratic side, people can spend some time looking at everything that we've got. And I'm writing down, so I won't forget it again. I forgot a caucus yesterday. For, booked the caucus for the 29th, 10:00 AM. Good. Thank you all.
I'm sorry, one more question.
Representative Carrick has his hand up. Oh, and so does Jenny, First Jenny still has her hand up.
I can't be at the 28th.
I can't be at the caucus on the 29th in the morning. I can be there in the afternoon.
Okay, so we'll have to start at 1:00 PM.
Okay.
Okay, so Jenny.
I had exec on those two bills on the 28th, but we're going to do it on the first or another day?
It's on the first, yeah. I'm not sure. I think that might have been under consideration at one point or another.
Yeah, I think so, too.
Okay, yeah, it's been very confusing. I do apologize. And we've lost the other person who had their hand up. So, I think that we can leave each other for the moment. And hopefully, Representative Ullery can get a bite to eat before he has to be on the next Zoom. So...
I just unmuted everybody unless they want to say goodbye.
Bye, I'm returning the meeting.
Bye.
Bye.
Okay, thank you.